Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Go ahead and call to order the watershed committee meeting for Marin Water on this Thursday, the 21st of September, 2023. And Terry, if I could please have a roll call.
Yes, good afternoon. Director Ronji Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell, Director Jed Smith, Vice Chair Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Matt Sampson.
Here. Next up, I'll need adoption, excuse me, a motion to adopt the agenda.
Samute.
Second.
Terry, any public comment on items on the agenda?
On it, there are none.
Great. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Director Kush.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Sampson.
Hi. Next up, do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, Mr. Tom Dos.
Ta-Tom Boss.
Oh, boss, sorry.
There we go. Oh, yeah, I wrote quickly there. Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been to work with Sarah Thatcher in your seasonals on the watershed over this last summer. We were working on the Azalea Hill project. We had, uh, three volunteer days, three volunteer days that yielded 75 hours of service, uh, toward to that project and to the care of the watershed. We had volunteers ranging in age from eight, eight to 80, and, uh, just a good mix of people, but was really impressed by the, uh, by the staff and the, and the, um, seasonals, their level of preparedness. And, um, and the follow-up to the, the nice thank you letters at the end of each of the trail days. So, uh, volunteer days. So anyways, excited to see this expansion of stewardship opportunities, uh, especially, uh, something that we heard loud and clear an interest in with the watershed rec plan. So kudos. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, great. And, um, before we move on to the calendar items, I just want to mention that, um, Director Smith, along with our watershed manager Sean Horn, um, unfortunately unable to attend today. But they're being joined by our water resource director Paul Cilie, doing some really good work for the district back east in DC and hopefully coming back with some funding so we can move forward on some of these watershed projects. So thank you for them for their efforts. Okay, item number one, um, minutes of the watershed committee meeting, motion to approve, please.
Samute.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Sampson.
Hi.
And there are no comments on that.
Great, thank you. Next up, item number two, our annual vegetation and management report.
Good afternoon, board members. Um, today I'll be presenting to you the summary of year four of our Biffip implementation. Biffip is the biodiversity fire and fuels integrated plan adopted in 2019. Uh, the first slide is of a pile burn that we did on Pilot Knob near Lake Lagunitas for reference. Um, we'll be discussing the work that we did with, uh, on vegetation, the actual implementation of the work as well as wildfire coordination with our local agencies. Give you a quick overview of the compliance and monitoring work that we continue to conduct, uh, and then delve into some of the specific vegetation management actions, their acreage and costs. Um, and then give you, uh, a quick overview of the work that we're now a couple of months into for year five of Biffip implementation, as well as looking past year five into, into the years beyond that. A quick overview of the Biffip biodiversity fires and fuels integrated plan, uh, again, adopted in 2019, focuses on the actions of the district to, uh, implement, um, uh, that will implement, uh, maintain, uh, reduce hazards and maintain ecosystem functions. Again, the goals minimize the risk from wildfire, preserve and enhance biological resources, as well as provide an adaptive framework for periodic reviews. That's part of what this report and presentation is about. Uh, then the management actions, these are on the ground, uh, things that we conduct include monitoring, inventorying and planning, uh, the physical work conducted as well as this annual report. Uh, again, we completed year four, we're into year five. This is a summary of the, uh, acreage. Uh, the target within the Biffip was, uh, 1495 acres. We came in at 1528. That slight overage relates, uh, to some priority weeds that we conducted. So that's about 30, 30 acres of priority weeds that, that actually are not called out in the Biffip by an acreage target. Uh, just shows you the, uh, general location of the work that we're doing. Uh, again, as a reminder, this, this work has built on and off of the 95 veg plan as well. So where the 95 plan focused on, um, the wooie or the perimeter along, you know, the towns of Ross, uh, Fairfax, Mill Valley, Kentfield. Um, uh, with the Biffip, we've been able to extend that work, uh, toward the interior, uh, most especially around Bon Tempe and the Bon Tempe Treatment Plant.
Carl, just real quickly, I think for everyone's benefit, can you, uh, just briefly help us understand why those sites were chosen?
Um, sure, sure. The 95 plan really focused on, uh, the, the interface, the wooie. Um, and, and again, if you look at the eastern property line, uh, featured here, where the towns of Fairfax, Ross and Mill Valley are labeled. There's, um, those different polygons, um, are areas that we had identified within, um, 100 to 300 feet of, of known structures, residential structures, and where we had built out defensible space and continue to maintain that. Um, as you look into the interior and the different colors, different colors represent different types of, uh, vegetation treatments that we're conducting. Um, most of that work follows along, uh, ridge lines, uh, ridge lines that often have roads or in proximity to roads. That also provides, uh, a forestry benefit as well as a, um, operational benefit for a fire helps to, um, break the, break the landscape up into manageable units should we have a, a wildfire in those areas.
Great, thank you. No, I, um, I really appreciate all the work being done, especially around our infrastructure at first, um, based on the fact that it's so critical not to just, you know, our operation, but everyone that, excuse me, that's going to use the water. Um, and then really looking at the rest of the projects, um, understanding that, you know, at one point in time, the, the, the fuel break concept was, was probably the, the best prescription that we could do. But as, as we evolved, start looking at different alternatives based on what's coming out for that work.
Yes, correct. I would agree with that. Um, again, here's a, a chronology of, of work conducted, uh, by fiscal year, uh, from, um, when we started really putting the Biffip into place in 2000 and FY 2020 to where we are now. Uh, and you'll see that we've, we've moved, uh, in part away from some of the immediate interface areas. If you look at the southwestern boundary, which is up, uh, up along, um, Ridgecrest Boulevard, you know, we've been conducting work in that area. Yeah. Again, it has a forestry benefit as well as a fire benefit. Um, and at very southernmost point of that, you'll see, uh, one of the blobs, uh, blue blob down there where we're hoping to conduct a prescribed burn, may possibly even this October.
And that's, um, sitting around Petra Meadows?
Uh, that one is centered near, uh, Rock Spring, Rock Spring Meadow. Uh, coordination and planning, this is, uh, some of the ongoing work, uh, we do with our, our agencies and, uh, other utilities such as PG&E. Um, we didn't, for red flags, we actually didn't have any red flag, uh, warnings last year, which is unusual. Uh, with county fire, we continue prescribed fire planning. I'm on the phone with them on a weekly basis. And again, as I mentioned, hoping to pull off a prescribed burn at Rock Spring. They would be the lead, uh, in, um, October, again, weather and, uh, fuels permitting. Uh, we continue to work with MWPA, the Marine Wildlife Prevention Authority, um, as a, um, member of their advisory technical committee, uh, and we also, uh, assist county fire and providing them locations for their annual Sawyer training for their seasonal staff. Uh, PG&E also always keeps us busy. We're tracking their work on the watershed when they're, you know, I was out today, uh, with our coordinator, looking at tree removals, you know, our treatment plant. We have them up on Pine Mountain right now doing hardware work. Um, we're looking at trying to just keep them in line with our compliance measures and, um, not, uh, not trash our roads in the process, uh, as they, as they conduct their work and as we do our best to support their work to reduce hazards along the line. Um, we have a number of leases on the land, uh, on our, on our, on our land on Mount Tam that, uh, we work to coordinate the maintenance of that land, uh, specifically the, uh, towers up on, yeah, Middle Peak, um, West Point Inn, um, Marin Stables, for example, are all leased lands that, uh, that we help to coordinate, uh, their fuels management and keep that work in line with our Biffip. Uh, ongoing monitoring and inventories, Osprey monitoring, uh, we, we've been doing this for, uh, 20 plus years, I believe. Overall trend is, is a decline in number of Ospreys. Um, it may not be a, a regional trend. It may just be them relocating to other locations from what I hear, um, notably to, um, uh, areas in, um, uh, further west Marin, like Inverness Ridge. Um, we also have an active bald eagle, um, that, that also, uh, seems to deter, um, the use of the, of use of the space by Osprey. They're big, big aggressive birds. Uh, we continue to monitor, uh, resilient forest, uh, uh, study plots that we established before the Biffip. And we're definitely used in informing how the Biffip came together in terms of how we conduct forest, uh, forest, um, uh, maintenance and forest, how we initially conduct forest work and then how we maintain it over time. Uh, yellow-legged frogs, bottom line there, um, our populations are stable within the little and big Carson drainages out near Pine Mountain. Um, and we also coordinate, uh, work on nearby drainages within Cascade Canyon, which is in County Open Space. Um, we continue, uh, non-native invasive, uh, plant mapping specifically with through one TAM and the EDDR program, the early detection rapid response, where they go out and help us, um, uh, assess 66 miles of roads and trails for, uh, priority invasive weeds. Um, and, and, uh, they can, uh, they can treat some of those initially, but then they'll often kick to us some of the larger patches that, that need contractor attention. Um, as part of our pre-project implementation, um, we conducted, uh, just over 411 acres worth of rare plant studies last year. Um, so that, that, that builds on work that we've been doing over the last four years, and we'll continue to do that in the, in the year ahead. Uh, and then that, then those, uh, then those surveys give us, uh, data that we can then, uh, use, uh, for avoidance measures on work coming up for the next five years. Uh, forest pests and pathogens, we've been implementing the BMPs that came out of the study that we did on the fight top throw out rumorum. That was the, that was the, um, the nasty soil pathogen found at the Pine Mountain Tunnel site. Um, and, uh, and, uh, was actually used to help inform that work in terms of not moving that pathogen around in, in, uh, dampened soil. Um, and we're going to be selecting new sites this up and coming year for additional, um, pathed soil pathogen surveys as well. Uh, ongoing environmental compliance, this is again, uh, the kind of the short, short version of this is spelled out in the Biffip. Uh, this is all work that we do, um, as, uh, you know, for prior to and during, uh, project, uh, Biffip project implementation. The contractors get trained on appropriate avoidance measures and site-specific, uh, uh, concerns. Uh, you know, the sites are often selected due to, uh, hydrology, biology and cultural evaluations. We're looking at, uh, and again, avoidance through planning. Uh, ongoing northern spotted owl surveys, uh, again, 20 plus years with this work, stable population, that's the bottom line there. And we absolutely have to, uh, um, implement avoidance measures there. That's usually, uh, most often through timing, uh, not conducting work within a quarter mile of their nests. Um, nesting season, which is, uh, um, February through, uh, July each year. Um, right before, uh, we conduct any work, except specifically 72 hours before we connect work, we send out, uh, consultants to help us with, um, identifying nesting birds during the nesting bird season, which is also January through August or a little bit later, depending on each year. Roosting bat surveys, those occur year round on, on, for, look for larger trees, specifically those larger than 10 inch diameter. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, earlier, the ramp rare plant compliance surveys, um, that we've been conducting. Um, I'll just give you a quick overview. Uh, I'm not going to read, uh, the text here, but this is just some summary statistics for the type of work that we do. The acreage that we completed and the cost associated with that. So 189 acres worth of fuel break maintenance, you know, so existing fuel breaks that we go back to. Um, at a cost of, uh, 500,000, um, at the end of these slides, I'll give you a, a little bit, bit of a breakdown on the cost per acre for each of these types of treatments. Um, defensible space, you know, around structures, it's often fine fuels, i.e. grasses, you know, 45 acres, $37,000. One of our least expensive, uh, fuel treatments. Um, broom management within our fuel breaks, um, 250, 250 acres, 140,000. Um, one change that we'll have coming up in this next round, I'll mention again later, our addendum allows us to aggregate all of our broom management activities and not break it into, um, as fine a category, which will give us a lot more, uh, flexibility, uh, for, for maintenance going on down the line. Uh, roadside mowing, access egress, facility access egress, just general recreational access egress as well. Uh, just before and after, it's the south side of Mount Hamon Railroad grade, you know, a 50 acre, 47 acres, $54,000. Uh, dams, we got to keep the woody vegetation off the dams to the dam faces aren't compromised by, uh, roots. Um, and so we're not using any herbicides. We're continuing to mow, um, mow the dam face. Uh, almost annual, almost annual on all the dams for woody vegetation, not necessarily grass, but for trees and shrubs that are growing on the dam face, groynes, crown. Uh, fuel break instruction, why definitely one of our, of our most expensive activities, the initial, uh, the initial creation of a shaded fuel break. Just an example of what, of an after photo down below it, Fern Canyon, south side of the mountain, um, fuel break work that we're doing a little bit closer to Sky Oaks. And again, this is breaking up the horizontal and vertical continuity of those fuels, reducing ladder fuels, kind of the fuels that would connect the, uh, the ground to the, to the canopy. And reducing the fire, uh, resultant fire behavior. Again, one of our most expensive activities, a lot of biomass to move. Um, early detection.
Carl, quick question. Is, uh, the, the stuff coming out of the shared fuel breaks that was going to the pile burning this past year?
Um, most of it goes to pile burning and/or if I can, I, I, I chip it, uh, or masticate it in place. But yeah, most of the piles that we have, uh, beginning of last year, we had 8,000 piles. I think we're down to 6,500 piles now. Um, I'm, uh, actually in, uh, in the process of putting together another contract, uh, to help us, uh, burn off all those piles so that we can reduce that, that fuel load. Um, and we make piles because the sites are often so remote and so steep that it's hard to get a machine or, um, ag, get, get access in there with another type of device to chip and broadcast it. And so that's, uh, at this point, the most cost-effective way to manage our fuels after treatment. Um, as I mentioned before, the one TAM program that helps us out on, on weeds, they covered 66 miles of roads. They discovered 186 patches of priority weeds. Um, and, and identified 135 new invasive populations. Those aren't necessarily large areas, but, uh, places that we, that we put, what we put our focus on. Uh, forest restoration, fuel reduction, again, some other costs here, uh, 62 acres, um, you know, 765,000. Uh, maintenance of sites, again, a lot less expensive to maintain them, uh, at 68 acres, it's 64,000, and that was that about 10% of the original cost. Uh, this is, this is a big one that we spent a lot of time on Douglas fir encroachments. On the absence of a naturally occurring frequent low intensity fires, we get a lot of Douglas fir invasion within our hardwood communities. Um, that and Tan Oak occupies a lot of our, our, our fuel maintenance. Um, and this is just a couple of examples of, of, uh, what that looks like before and after. Um, some of these can be seen from Sky Oaks Road. Next time you're up there driving along, you'll be able to see these, uh, open areas. And, uh, I think even most of those piles in that Sky Oaks photo have been, uh, have since been burned.
Carl, I just want to highlight what you just said too about, um, in the absence of low intensity recurring fire on somewhat of a natural interval.
Yeah.
We get this and at 150 acres for a million dollars, that's expensive compared to a prescribed fire. If we could bring that back now, looking at different options, now that we, I think we're getting back to a better place. Hopefully the maintenance, you know, with the exception of expansion of, of land decreases, once we can bring back some of the tools, I think are more effective and probably better for the environment as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I would say that, um, I'd also emphasize that most of the polygons you're asking earlier about how we identify polygons and, and, and put together these treatments. Uh, many of them, um, are designed and laid out with the intent that we can eventually put fire on the ground as a maintenance tool. Uh, you know, where, you know, we have a handful of, of fire, uh, burn plans right now, uh, and we'll be expanding on those as the years progress. Um, I've just got to kind of work out some of the logistics on that. Right now it's not a, um, a meaningful way to address the landscape at a landscape level with fire, but, uh, our intent is that ma, that fire could be a very useful and cost-effective tool.
Right. And I think it's a good point that, um, we're not going through, looking at, you know, everything with just a hammer as a tool being prescribed fire. There's areas where it's applicable and where not. And I think that was one of the big benefits I took away from the Forest Health Project is they actually talked about where prescribed fire would benefit. So areas like this, especially if it's a reducing, reduction in cost and a benefit for the environment. So thank you.
You bet. Um, broom removal, uh, we do a lot of that, uh, we've been continuing to do that. It's all manual. Um, we're pulling it, we're not cutting it. So any new broom that we tackle, it's, it's a manual effort and, uh, we'll follow up. It's probably on a two-year cycle. We want to get back to those plants before they produce seed in the next round of seed, uh, cause it is in fact the seed bank that we're trying to reduce. And once, well, you know, the initial removal is just the first phase, but usually takes five or seven years to really knock it down. And a great example of what that looks like, if you put that much effort into it is the Sky Oaks Meadow, which 20 something years ago was full of broom. Um, and we've been, uh, really, really staying on it and our costs are, are minimal there, uh, in terms of having to pass, you know, pass through annually to do a little minor broom pole. Um, some costs for other priority weeds, again, contract work here, uh, goat grass, yellow star, uh, other, and, and other priority weeds, just, just different types of costs associated with those. Um, and most of these, these weeds are associated with grasslands. Experimental weed treatment, we called that goat grazing.
Does that mean that they're not a problem anyplace else?
No, no, no. So, uh, a lot of these priority weeds just so happen to be within grasslands. I mean, uh, uh, one that we're very familiar with, French broom occurs in a oak woodlands, uh, not so much in the mixed conifer. Um, but the shaded areas don't have as much, don't have as much of the Mediterranean weed component as the gra, open sunnier grassy areas do. And we're, we're trying to retain our, our grassland habitat. Um, that's actually in part why we do so much fur abatement. Where, let's say on Ridgecrest Boulevard, we have those firs in the absence of fire, marching out into the grasslands. And we've been able over the last 20 years to push those back to what we think is a roughly historic drip line.
So then if we were to use animals like goats.
Yes.
They eat everything, right?
Yeah, well, no, not, uh, not everything. I don't like broom.
Well, they don't like broom, but I mean, as far as.
They was broom, but they don't eat broom.
The grasslands, they would eat, they would.
I would, I would, I could say everything, but yeah, they, 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 they generally take it down. But if you, if you time it correctly, uh, you might, you, you might actually be able to do, do it with the benefit of, um, uh, increasing native, native cover. Um, one of the things that happens in grasslands is there's an, uh, the natural invasion of bacillus or coyote brush. Uh, and then, and the absence of fire starts to fill in our grasslands as well. Um, and so I think what we'll be doing this next year under this category is putting the goats, not necessarily within broom, uh, but putting them within coyote-dominated grasslands that we want to see if we can control that coyote brush.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to try it.
It's exciting to get the price tag for the goats.
Yeah, well, I think I got some, uh, uh, what were my goat costs here? There it is.
I have a solution for that though, too, because I'm going to ask you next. I mean, you know, a lot of it is overhead in moving the animals in and out. Does it make sense to just have our own goats?
No. Um, I mean, yeah, because we would only use them for a, a, a small window each year, and then we'd be responsible for them the rest of the year.
We got the rangers, they take care of.
No, no, no. Uh, and with the, the contractors are set up to, to be able to mobilize them. And we actually try to, um, we coordinate with, with our agencies in the county, you know, we, we're not quite to the point where we're herding them through downtown Fairfax yet from one place to the next. But, um, we work with the herder to, when they're in Fairfax or they're in Ross, you know, so that there's a limited amount of transport in Mobe and D-Mobe. Um, we also.
Carl, Carl, I'm, I'm guessing that we've got directors, at least a couple with big houses on big lawns.
I think. I, I, maybe.
The goats.
You'll put it on their property?
On their property.
Okay, all right.
Larry will try first to volunteer.
Per parcel.
They won't eat much on my grass. My grass is brown.
How good, uh, would they like, actually, they, 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 they tend to like dry grass. I mean, if that's what's left, they'll eat dry grass.
Love my place.
They'll eat dry grass over green broom. That's what we've been finding out.
Well, who wouldn't?
All right, back to the goats. Uh, so I mean, you can see the cost. Uh, we did 31 acres at $27,000. Um, I think I'm kind of done with goats on broom now. We're going to move, we're going to move toward, um, another species now.
When you can, I'm sorry, I, I think, well, there you go. You have your cost per acre.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
On all these things, that, that's great. I, I just want to ask on the goat thing, like, um, do you get, do you have to come back through and get the things that they don't get? I mean, or is it, I, 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 part of the, I'm assuming to some degree, some of this acreage overlaps with each other.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, I'm curious, like, you know, uh, you know, how.
I, I do, and I don't, I don't want to, um, completely dismiss goats because I think there's a totally appropriate use of goat grazing and, and, and habitat, if you're taking into account weeds and rares, uh, you got to be careful with the goats too, because, you know, their hooves and the way they graze actually invite, uh, opens up the habitat to weeds.
Mm-hmm.
There's been some really nasty, um, explosions of yellow star thistle after goat grazing and San Salmo, you know, after, after some of that work done.
And are we seeing that too?
No, no. So I, that's what I've been trying to pick locations that don't have that type of noxious weed that would thrive post goat grazing. Um, and, and what I'm finding is the, you know, here that you saw the cost, 27 acres, 30 grand. I still got to come back and follow through. They're, they're not taking care of the woody vegetation, you know, they, they may, you know, they, they may be nibbling off the, the bottom leaves of things, but they're, I still got to put a hand crew in there or a machine to masticate it. Um, I've also got the challenge, like in some places where they love, um, like the Madrone bark, some oak trees and madrones, they'll start chewing on the young trees that we're trying to protect. So they're not selective in that sense. I can train a contractor to not eat the, not, not cut the, not, not eat, but not cut the Madrone. I can't do that with a goat yet.
I, I think that where I'm going with this is when we need to treat an acre, you know, completely for, for fuels, for exotics and so forth. What's that cost? You know, like, how, how to compare it, because obviously the, the goats aren't, that, that one cost doesn't actually take care of the whole acre. There's a, there's some additional cost of coming back and getting what the goats don't. Just wanted to see where we really stand with cost effectiveness on, on dealing with ma, maintaining our land. Cause we have so much land to maintain, so much to do, cost effectiveness is.
And, and like, you know, take a look at this, this summary here, and it varies, it varies widely by the type of work we're doing. The initial forestry work, most expensive. The maintenance of that forestry work dramatically goes down, you know, cutting grass is super easy. Um, and then a lot of these areas too take multiple phases. So like within a forestry unit, one of the first passes we'll make is the removal, the hand removal, uh, by contract crews of, of broom. And then the second pass may be with hand crews and saws, cutting, limbing, bucking. Third pass maybe with machines masticating, uh, and/or that third or fourth pass might be with a crew coming in to do the pile burning. Um, and so we're, we're trying to capture a lot of those costs here. Um, and you're right, they absolutely overlap, but it, it, there's a lot of variability out there just because it's, the, the landscape is, is such a mosaic of, of veg types.
Um, is it, I don't see, is it the cost of having the, 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 um, cleared vegetation piled up and then burned at a later point?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or masticated, whatever the, the solution is, is that, is there, is that embedded in these things or is that another additional?
I think we, uh, if you, if you look at the maintenance of forest fuels, um, you know, we're, we're including, um, what we, we include our pile burning costs as, as part of that. You know, yeah, so we'll go in and do the initial treatment, which is, uh, which is up there, uh, initial forest reduction, you see that at 12 grand. So you could actually add to the, to, to get to a desired state, that might be the way I'd put it, a desired state that is sustainable and/or maintainable. You would have to combine some of these. So you would take like the initial cost at 1,200, 12,000 and then add to that, they, maybe the maintenance cost of, um, you know, 15, you know, 1,000 bucks like that. So that's not, that's not unusual, but, but the, the best thing is that the maintenance continues to stay low if you stay on, and if you cyclically stay on that maintenance, uh, on a regular basis.
Sorry, go ahead, Ronji.
Thanks, Matt. Carl, what is our budget annually for vegetation management?
Good, good question. Uh, hang, hang tight for a couple of slides and I'll get to that one. I'll show you what, I'll show you what I budgeted, what we, the difference between what I've budgeted and what we find in through grants and, um, I'll get to that.
And Carl, just before you leave this slide, I think it's important to highlight the fact that the most expensive component of this is the initial work.
Correct.
That just means, and not just us, this is not a knock on organization, but everybody's behind the curve on this statewide.
We have 75 plus years with a deferred maintenance on most of them.
So it's going to be expensive catch-up.
2,000 years of.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I mean, well, you know, the, the, since European arrival, right?
Or longer, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, um, eight, or 1947, last time, really got a, a burn here. So we're, we're, we have some work to do, but the good news is, is that if we continue to knock the stuff off, we continue to get to a place where we can do maintenance that's more affordable. We can start really accelerating this process as we move forward.
Yes, yeah. I mean, at, at some point, we'll, we'll have to decide what is financially sustainable in terms of how much we build out, how much we maintain on a, you know, going, going forward into the future. We're, there's no, I, I've never, I've never, for example, proposed that we hit all 20,000 acres on Mount Tam. I mean, I just, it's probably not. I mean, I just, it's probably not feasible, and at some point a wildfire will do that for us, you know, but.
Unless we wanted to grow marijuana.
No, maybe.
Then we could get it all done.
All right, uh, I'll move on here. It's the interest of time. Look at that, next slide, perfect. Um, so uh, third, second column, uh, that, that's the BIFIP estimate, that's two point seven million dollars total. Um, the irony behind this document is that they neglected to include um uh environmental costs, you know, and for us, uh, environmental costs, you know, this year you can see it um, uh, four hundred and almost seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and our actual cost for this fiscal year was three point seven, so about a million off of what the BIFIP had estimated. Again, that was based on two thousand nineteen. I think by the time they published that in two thousand nineteen, they were already out of date and they haven't, they hadn't taken into account the uh increasing costs, especially over the last few years for contractors. Um, and again, the absence of, of, of a line item for compliance within a compliance document, um, you know, but that's what we're doing to stay uh in compliance, uh, is that four hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, but this is losing eighty acres a year, right?
Um, no, no. Um, I, I, I think you'd asked that before on the broom specifically, right? Um, we're in the process of re- uh, of, of remapping and looking at that.
Okay.
I, I think, I, I, we're not at that point anymore. I, I really think we're, we're able to, we're holding it at bay in a lot of places and, and, uh, and, uh, uh, Matt, to answer another que- another way to answer your question earlier, about where we're putting some of those polygons is at the leading edge of, of broom, not necessarily in the heart of some of those areas, not, we're not jumping in the middle of the pool and trying to scoop the water out. You know, we're on the edge, uh, we're on the edge trying to control the outward spread of it, you know, you'll see that around Deer Park and um, Sky Oaks Meadow, for example. I don't have a hard number for you, but it's not expand, I, it's, I, I think we're, I think we've leveled off, okay? And, and we made, we made me with a point, we're starting to push, push that leading edge back.
I would suggest we pick this up at a next meeting or next meeting. Because that eighty acres, trust me, is being tossed around in the community.
Okay.
And uh.
I don't have a hard number for you.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but it's nice to know that we may have turned the tide. Even if we're not, I mean, it, it's probably still sixty or something, right? It's not zero, but at least um, it's better than it was.
Yeah, I, I think it does get, this does get a lot of attention for good reason, but if there's, um, and I understand it's not like you can snap your fingers and you get an, a report on, on spread over the past year, but do we, um, do we have a, a survey cycle where, whereupon we can compare from year to, from time period to time period, whether we're where we're at in terms of, you know, I think the, the idea of me, if we can get to the point where it's not spreading to new areas is like cause for celebration.
That's, that's a part of what that E D D R group does, is that they, they've been out looking for priority weeds, one which is broom. And they have, they have maps through Calflora of all of the known populations and individuals. And when we find an errant or a new stand, we jump on it. You know, so that, that's really holding back the expansion, you know, and that effort's been going on too for the last five plus years. Um, you know, that in addition to other, other weeds, but specifically to broom too.
So from that, you're not seeing new reports of new locations and that's.
Every now and then a, a, a random or errant plant or two that we can go and knock out with some seasonals in a day.
Yeah.
You know, and, 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 and the Calflora gives us historic records of where those, in this case, French broom plants or populations have been found and we can, and, you know, go back and identify them, or if it's a new one, we, we can note that and, 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 and put repeated efforts on it, so it doesn't expand.
So Carl, what I'm hearing is interest in um, what is the number?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll be able to do that over time and understand it. Is it coming down? Is it approximately twenty acres a year now, forty? Is it actually really static and just kind of bring an understanding of that?
Yeah, that's exactly it, man.
I think not only do we care, but if we actually achieve that.
Mm-hmm.
That's newsworthy to me, to maybe not to all people, but like, the fact if we've actually, our management efforts have led to, to the cessation of spreading of French broom. I, I think that's some kudos or warranted to you and to other folks for us having it, uh, hit that milestone, so. Be great to know, but I, I know it's not a precise science. I know you.
I, 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 I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable telling you.
I know you don't.
My gut, my gut tells me we're pushing it back, is we're, 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 I'm just looking at it where we're on the map and how we've been.
Whatever we can say about it that you feel comfortable defending, and I know it's not a precise science, you don't know where every single little plant is throughout our entire watershed, so. But getting a sense of whether we are getting ahead of this, I think you've got the, the message that every time you come up here, you know, you're gonna hear about French broom from us, so this would be, this is.
How are we doing toward that effort? I mean, you almost have to ask us in seven years too, because everything that we do now that we have to come back to maintain and keep maintaining, if we, if we didn't touch what we just did last year, in two or three years, it would all be back.
Sure.
And, and you just gotta keep staying on it and staying on it and, um.
I think the other thing that would be useful is your assessment of how things would change were we to have herbicides.
That's a, uh, yeah, that could be, that could, that could be a Pandora's box, but uh.
But I, I think it's important to understand, uh, because cost-wise, everything, I mean, it's, it's, it's order of magnitude different than the numbers you're talking about.
Yeah, the, 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 the cost would certainly be less.
Yeah.
The, the political or public concern would certainly be.
Uh, that's our problem, not yours.
I, I, I am concerned, Larry, when, if we bring this up even in a, in a casual manner, it creates a perception that there is a movement by the board to act in some way on herbicides, and that's not the case at this point. I think it would require a lot of consultation with stakeholder groups and others, so. Just want to be really clear that, you know, uh, when we do, if we do want to talk about that, we should really be, have the intent uh in place first.
Well, perhaps. I mean, if you don't ask, you don't know. So I think it's important that we have a firm foundation to work from. And it, it's important to look at all alternatives. It was included in the BIFIP, at least partially. Um, so it, 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 the roots are there, no pun intended, but um, I, I think I, I, I don't read it as catastrophic, as you might, and, you know, so to me, it's just information.
Right, yeah. I, I think on this issue, because it is so sensitive, um, statements can be misinterpreted, so we just have to be very careful, you know, and, and, and if we do think this is something we want to explore, I think, again, uh, you know, the intent around discussions has to be very clear to, to, to all stakeholders.
And, and also from my perspective, to be clear, the, the work that we're doing now and the work that we plan on doing even for the next five years assumes all manual, like, uh, manual or mechanical.
Sure.
Treatments, either for the new or for the maintenance.
Hey Carl, just to bring it back to your presentation here on the slide, you had mentioned the increased costs um associated with um monitoring to keep us in compliance, but I think it's, it's not just putting us in compliance, I think it's ensuring that we're doing what's best for the land that we have, because that includes uh monitoring of species, includes monitoring of rare plants, includes a lot of things, so that it's not just checking a box on a form somewhere, we're taking extra steps to making sure that we're really understanding the, the outcomes of our work, so just an important budget item.
Yep, um, I would, I would agree with that. Uh, a lot of this is driven by SEQA, um, a lot of it is also driven by our own knowledge of how um, how we're doing stewarding the land.
And, and just to echo, I mean, I think monitoring sometimes gets um labeled with sort of a, a burden around the neck kind of thing. Um, I, I think it's also gotta be really important, um, as we look at the, all the work that we're doing in the Wui, the importance it is for the people who live in the Wui and who are increasingly challenged to find um fire insurance. So I don't know whether what we're doing is helping people to stay insured or whether it's doing anything to reduce their, their rates. But if nothing else, it is making them safer, and so knowing that is, is something that um is, is worthwhile. So appreciate the monitoring for all the reasons we're doing it.
For those as well, okay. And, and our work is one piece of that greater question, I would say, so. So here, um, adaptive management, so kind of lessons learned and, and lessons learned in how we've um morphed as we've moved along. Um, we've used uh fire modeling uh to help inform uh future pla- uh work that we're planning. I'll show you a slide of that next. Um, we continue to collaborate with uh One TAM Partners, uh, the uh, One TAM Regional Forest Health Strategy was just released. Um, that's online now, uh, that, uh, we had a significant role in helping to influence that document as it was put together. It has recommendations in it and it has uh strategies in it uh that all the different agencies in the county can um, use to inform their work and help them, uh, actually even when they're submitting uh proposals for uh grant funding. Lessons learned, I mentioned this, but you know, compliance costs continue to increase uh per acre uh over time. Our maintenance costs are continuing to increase, these are contractor costs, labor costs. Um, inventories uh need to be prioritized based on funding availability. The BIFIP calls out uh for a number of, a number of uh inventories and our monitoring efforts that um, aren't necessarily being conducted, um, that just haven't, we don't have the funding for at this point. We're, we're in the process of, of implementing the, the adopted BIFIP addendum. I'll give you an overview of, of what, what was in that in a couple of slides. And, and as mentioned earlier, we're continuing to uh coordinate with MWPA on work on the ground. So uh, we're, we're there, where the, for example, where the Greater Ross Valley Fuel Break overlaps with our property, um, specifically around Fairfax and a little bit of Kentfield. Um, we're working with MWPA to allow their crews using our compliance to conduct work on our land. So that's been a pretty successful partnership over the last, this last year. Uh, fuel modeling, okay, um, focus on the blue dot. Blue dot in the middle of this slide, uh, both slides is the Bon Tempe Treatment Plant, our most important resource, or the most important facility on the watershed, I guess. Uh, and this is the before um, uh, photo, the, basically the brighter or darker, the red is the um, uh, longer the flame length, so the, the more intense the fire behavior. This is pre-treatment, so um, this is our baseline, uh, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. Uh, and this is where we anticipate being in the right-hand uh slide there uh by two thousand or by twenty-four. Uh, where our flame lengths have gone from, you know, ten to fifty-plus feet down to um, you know, less than five, less than five feet. So fire behavior, again, fire intensity, if we can reduce that, we will reduce the fire severity, which is the impact to the, the veg. And we can improve response time, um, and hopefully the resilience of the whole system to uh bounce back after a wildland fire. Um, we've put a lot of effort into this area that uh, the black lines there demarcate multiple polygons and represents um, immediately around there about two hundred acres uh around the treatment plant. Uh, most of the sou- southern portion of these polygons are complete. If you get a chance, I'd highly recommend. We got crews out right now working on the northern part of these polygons, uh, which extend down to uh near Phoenix Lake, over to Fish Grade, then up to Filter Plant Road. It's uh super impressive work in terms of the steepness of the hillside. Uh, it's an area that's got some really neat fire history as you open it up and you can see the old second growth redwoods, but you can see all the fire scar in there. And uh, you see what I, what I interpret as, as a much healthier forest and hopefully a much safer um, uh, immediate proximity for our treatment plant. And this, this work, uh, this fuel modeling work was done by Tuckman and um, Tuckman Geospatial um, this last year.
Carl, the work that's been done out there is, is fantastic, and it looks, you know, at first it's so different than what we've been used to, but then you start looking at old pictures of Mount Tam forty, fifty, seventy, eighty years ago, and it looks like it did back then.
Yeah.
Um, and it really starts, I think it's gonna take a while for the public to understand what right looks like or what healthy looks like. But this is a great way for them to get a peek into that piece there. I did have a question on the Tuckman stuff. Was there a certain reason why flame length was chosen as a variable?
We, I'm, I'm presenting flame length here, but they also did uh, 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 fire behavior modeling, so it's a spread across the landscape as well. Um, they used on-the-ground transects as well as um, um, the fine scale map and the LiDAR derived uh data, so um, I didn't, I just time, I didn't include the fire spread, uh, looking at different ignition points across the watershed, both inside the watershed and outside the watershed. Uh, taking into account the most extreme fire weathers, I think they pulled one of the two thousand seventeen October event days and used that for their fire modeling. Uh, we're, we're not saying we're gonna stop the fire, we've never said that. We're just saying you, you might be able to increase your response time, you might be able to better protect, like in this, for example, the treatment plant. Treatment plant might be better off after a major fire, if it's not burning quite as hot or as intense in that area or as fast.
Or as high.
No, I. Or as high, yeah, yeah, so.
That's what I remember the flame length being.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the, the flames drop out, the model so that the flames are draw, the, the fire's not running through the canopy, that, that if you've taken out the understory fuels, it's not preheating it, so it's not running through the canopy.
Well, and, and canopy fires in the Mediterranean climate are almost non-existent. We actually look at running grounds.
Okay, okay, running crown fire.
But um, I think it's gonna be important as we continue this work, because I think this is good stuff. So it was just a curiosity question, but the follow-up being that um, what we're really trying to solve for is fire spread or speed.
Yes.
Because that's what we're really worried about on the bad days, so it'd be interesting to see how they incorporate that fire spread rate.
They've got some, I, I'm sorry, I didn't include them here, but they've got some great graphics. Basically, the, the, the spread and the rate of spread dramatically is reduced within these areas that we've, that we've treated.
Thank you.
Going on, I'm probably going long here, sorry about that. Uh, just looking ahead more, uh, we're gonna continue to monitor uh forest pests and pathogens. Um, continue to collaborate with One TAM on Forest, the Forest Health Strategy, continue with the MWPA on their technical advisory committee. Uh, this bullet point here, continue mapping and treating non-native invasive plants. Um, I don't think we can do it by the next committee meeting, but uh, I'll put some effort into uh thinking about how we're doing on the, the broom, specifically the French broom spread, whether or not we're up neutral or down, okay? Uh, we do a lot of outreach, uh, so that's, that's a good point to, here, we, we've been putting out a lot of signs, we do that for our project works as it's being conducted. Uh, just, and we, uh, we conduct regular tours uh for the public uh throughout the, through these sites, specifically where this uh loop that we do around Lake Lagunitas, those have been very beneficial to educating our public and the stakeholders, uh politicians. Um, I'm supposed to take a Califire rep out next week, you know, to show them what their money's buying. Um, continue prescribed fire planning, um. I have second, third week of October are the next two burn windows I have for uh Rock Spring or Ridgecrest Burn, so that's what I'm aiming at. Midweek on each of those. Um, year five, so that's what we're into now. Uh, this is what we're, what we're aiming for is to uh hit the year five goals within the BIFIP. As noted earlier, the addendum um allows us to increase our initial fire fuel reduction from sixty to a hundred acres. Um, that'll, that certainly aligns with a lot of funding priorities and our own priorities. Um, and allow us to increase our forest maintenance from one hundred to three hundred, again, so I can stay on top of um, of, of these sites and so that they don't revert to where we started. Uh, and then just again, for operational ease, we aggregated all of our broom management actions into one. We didn't change the total, but just just gave a seven hundred and sixty-five acres of broom ma- of broom management from which we can choose from, whether it's maintenance or new. Um, uh, work that we're gonna be doing this, this year, uh, more work around uh Sky Oaks, Scott, uh Taylor Trail. Uh, more work around Petrow Meadows, uh, Sandrona Ridge, that's also in coordination with um, uh, County Fire and MWPA. Um, new more, more broom work, more new broom work around Ross Reservoir, Shaver Grade. Trying to get a prescribed fire off the ground, and, and this FY, um, we'll see. Um, and scaling up our forestry work in accordance with the BIFIP, I've talked about that, and to continue management of invasive weeds. I think that may be it for me. There we go.
Well, thank you very much.
For that.
Comments?
Um, Carl, um, uh, do we have, um, I, I, so in, in some of the work that I do on, on, on stream health and, and restoring stream flows and, and, and managing landscapes that have been highly altered in our northern coastal watersheds, one of the things that I work on is um, our streams that have been, that have gullied basically because of changes in land use practice that, you know, have caused downcutting. And one of the exciting new strategies that's emerging that pairs with fuel load reduction is using some of that, that cleared material to stuff into gullies, you know, and to, and to um, and to be able to, for, for the benefit of folks who don't understand how it works, is functionally taking, not just throwing brush down into a gully and walking away, it, it's actually packed in a certain way with layers of dirt. And what um, the benefits are, is that it, is that it, it slows down water that's moving down a stream, so it, it reduces its downcutting power. It actually helps to rebuild the channel bed up. And then that, all that raised bed elevation ends up becoming storage for water functionally, as well as um, reducing sediment, you know, runoff down into our reservoirs and, 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 and other things. So as I see you nodding, I'm gathering you're, you're familiar with this notion. And I'm just wondering to what extent, you know, we have op, um, areas where we could pair some of the fleet fuel load reduction with um, with repairing of our landscape, you know, that has an actual water supply benefit. And um, you know, I've, I, as I've gone through the watershed, I haven't seen a whole lot. And, um, you know, I've, I, as I've gone through the watershed, I haven't seen a whole lot of, of down cut stream channels, but I have seen some places. And so I'm just wondering whether, in, in this, I don't want, this, this could be a like, let's come back to this, the next, you know, at the next watershed committee meeting, but I'd love to see if there's a way that, you know, that cost of having to come back and burn the fuel, like, is there a way that, you know, when you have crews already out there to pair these things together?
Maybe the quick answer would be a lot of the work that we're doing is, is high, high on the watershed. And like, you know, so class three streams and, and a lot of that work is above our reservoirs. So they're fairly dry and one of their avoidance measures for the work we conduct is stand out of stream, stand, stand out of stream channels with, you know, crews and equipment. Um, Eric, you know, they're going to speak next, but you know, they can talk about all the wooded agreement that they've installed within, you know, the main stem that has, that definitely has that both, you know, fishery benefit and a, and a sediment control benefit.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the large, large weight debris is a different scale category than what I'm talking about. I'm definitely talking about more, much more of your class two and class three stream reaches where, you know, can be, if they are proximal to where we're doing fuel load reduction, there might be a co-benefit.
And the, a lot of the, um, a lot of the, uh, masticated material that's left on the ground does, does help with that. You know, that we're, we're not, we're not seeing, um, a lot of erosion. We're not seeing actually any erosion after the work that we've done. There's enough, uh, the ground is not exposed afterwards and there's enough of that, uh, chipped or, or, uh, masticated material left. It seems to, to break up that fall, the rainfall.
Yeah. Okay. We make, I'll make time, we can chat about a little bit more later.
Thanks. Larry? No, no, Ron Chief.
Carl, thanks a lot for great update. You know, I think, um, we obviously have members of our community that are acutely aware of the requirements for managing our watershed, both from risk management perspective as well as environmental sustainability. But I would say a large parts of our community, and I put myself in that category until not long ago, are, are not very aware of all of these responsibilities, the requirements for undertaking wildfire management, um, environmental management. So this type of the efforts that you're doing, I think are, are, they're inspiring. I hope that we can, you know, continue to disseminate all of this progress across the entire Marin Water Community. Um, just a couple of, uh, questions, I think your discussion with Monte just now ma- uh, made me wonder if vegetation management also has an impact on the productivity of the watershed? Can you draw any links between management of the watershed and its actual productivity?
Productivity in terms of water yield?
Yeah.
Um, we, we've, uh, attempted to do some water yield studies up on Belinus Ridge as part of the UC Davis Cal Poly, um, uh, forestry work we did up there. You know, it, it's a little inconclusive, um, and you know, part of it was, it was conducted in the drought, so that doesn't help. Um, and we didn't have a, a strong baseline to go from, you know, from looking at, you know, what, what the, what the flows were like pre-treatment versus what they were afterwards. That is a study that we have considered, but, uh, we haven't, uh, we haven't jumped into that one yet. Yeah, you know, I, I would certainly argue that, and there's, there's studies out there already that a landscape that is more resilient to fire and bounces back faster is going to have a water quality benefit. You know, if you have a, you know, instead of a stand replacing fire, if you have a lower intensity fire move across the landscape, um, that's going to be better than a standard replacing fire, where you're going to have a, a, a larger sediment, uh, push afterwards.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I work in, in Cape Town and South Africa and you'll remember that a few years ago, they literally hit ground zero. I mean, no, they ran out of water. I mean, they were a day too away from just the city going dry. And in response to that, watershed management has become a huge priority for them. And one of the things they've realized is the types of invasives they have there really affect yield. So removing those invasives has become critical for improving the resilience of the, their water supply. That may not, we may not, you know, be, are the issues that we're dealing with with respect to invasives and, and other factors around vegetation may be less impactful, but, but just curious. Um, just one, one, uh, somewhat unrelated question, but since you're here, I'm going to take advantage of that. And that is, you know, uh, regarding our roads and trails that interest, that, that cross jurisdictional boundaries. Um, do we have, do you feel like we have good coordination and sort of managing the use and the, uh, uh, maintenance of those roads and trails when we're moving across jurisdictional boundaries? Is there a system now for coordinating that?
I don't, I don't know that there's a formal system, but certainly there is a, a, a long-term relationship with the, the equivalents. You know, uh, uh, that's not my direct role anymore, but I, I had that role for, you know, 15 years. And so, you know, knowing the, um, the staff from the other agencies and working with them, uh, for example, we'll be sending out after the first rains, uh, a map of our, of our road closures to, uh, to County Fire, County Parks, State Parks, and letting them know what roads we have. Actually PG&E, letting them know what roads are open. Um, uh, we have, uh, when we're doing fuel work and, and, and the process doing maintenance, uh, as we are now on San Geronimo Ridge, we work very closely with County Parks, um, resource staff and Marin County Fire Staff. So, uh, but there, I, I, I wouldn't say there's a formal structure in place for that, but certainly a good working relationship.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And I would end on just, uh, all of this work, it's, it's team. I don't, I, it's a team effort, right? So it's, it's not me, it's, it's staff, contractors, consultants. So.
Well, Carl, um, thank you, you and Sean and the entire team, um, for everything you've done. The, this, the annual report you put together was very comprehensive, very clearly written. So thank you very much for that. Very informative. So appreciate the work that went into that. Sure. It wasn't just an easy lift. So, um, especially with all the work that goes on behind it. But I think the, the theme here is we've got a lot of work to do. And the, and the part of that theme is there's no silver bullet to take care of it all. And I think, you know, we continue to deal with years and years of fire exclusion in management practices we thought were best, that we're finding out now science is saying that might not be the case. And so as we continue to get back to a place where we can accept some of these new prescriptions, i.e. fire, I think we need to jump on them right away and take as much advantage of them as we can, because that's really what this environment was used to. And there's a reason why it looked the way it did before we settled down and, and, you know, put up a fence and kept fire out for a long time. So it may be great to get back to those areas and you're seeing it in other parts that stay actually Western United States. Oregon's doing some incredible work with their forest management and return of prescribed fire. And so, um, a lot of good technological advances in it so that it's, um, less of an impact to the environment and, and the animals and the plants that are in there already. It was really good to see the work, uh, planned for San Geronimo Ridge. That part of the watershed makes me a little bit nervous, uh, especially on the western slope down into the leg of Kent and then the continuity of fuel right into those communities along Sir Francis Drake. So thank you very much for that. Um, and also a big thank you for the work the staff did with the Forest Health Project. The, the projects that were put into that plan, um, from the Marin water side were well thought out. And I thought that, um, they were, I guess, they're, they're perfect through the lens of forest health. And I, and I think a lot of that, I know that we're dealing with fire here, but the way that they were, they were picked and selected are really good. What I'd like to see us continue is looking through the lens of, um, a large scale or regional fire and how our lands play into that equation, because Monte, to your point earlier, it's not going to be too long before somebody from the private industry puts a risk map down on Marin County for wildfire and that's going to relate directly to insurance. Um, and if we have a component of that, then we are going to be influencer affecting people's ability to get insurance. And I want to make sure that we're well positioned, um, to, to let the public know that we're doing everything we can with the funds we have, excuse me, to reduce our risk and continue to work with our partners at Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. I think they're well suited, well positioned to take the lead and, and they have a lot of great people working for them and a lot of really good ideas. So continue that relationship to move forward. So that's all I, thank you very much.
We have several speakers.
Great.
Um, the first, the first one, the first few, Phil Soder, Ed Jamison, then Larry Minikis. Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Uh, thank you very much. That's a great presentation. I remember about 10 years ago, talking with, uh, Mike Swayze about, um, broom in particular. And, um, we were trying to figure out what the budget should be to get a hold of it. And I think we both independently came up with $6 million and that was at a time when, um, I think it was i- i- in the low millions. I, I think we got it up to 3 million and it's just been making fantastic progress ever since then. I wanted to comment, uh, briefly on, on, um, volunteers as a source of, of vegetation management, primarily broom. Um, and I wanted to point out that two different models that I think are being used in Marin. Uh, one day, one is a one-day special event and the other is a sustaining model where volunteers adopt a patch of broom and work it regularly until the seed bank is depleted. Uh, the one-day event, which the water district tends to use mostly, requires a lot of staff time and logistics and food and getting it together is a big event. I, I once calculated that a one-time volunteer event costs as much as, as contractors would for that time period. But volunteer events are good for education. Uh, the sustaining model where a group of volunteers adopt a patch of broom needs minimal oversight and staff time. Uh, county open space, space uses both models while the water district uses primarily one-day events. Um, there are in Marin, a number of, uh, volunteer groups that go after broom. One of the original ones was, uh, Broombusters, which handled the Tiburon Peninsula. They started in 1997 and they've, they've since opened up beautiful views of San Francisco on the, um, Tiburon Peninsula. The seed bank is nearly depleted and you have to crawl around looking for a broom shoot. We have a group in the valley called Broom Service. Um, we've been going for 10 years. Uh, we meet for a couple of hours every Thursday and we work, uh, we've got about a dozen adopted patches on both open space and private property. Uh, we cycle through every, uh, 12 to 18 months and there are no, uh, seed producing plants left in those areas. Another group is the Terre Linda Sleepy Hollow Broom Club, which started three years ago. They meet every Tuesday, uh, and I'm seeing that in the water district, it seems that Sky Oaks as well as Lake Lagunitas could easily become sustaining, um, uh, models where, where we get a, a group of volunteers that works, work those properties every week or so. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, I'd just like to suggest that this committee be given the facts on herbicides so that it can make informed and cost-effective decisions going forward. On fire risk, my home insurance has gone up 42% in the last two years. And some folks are finding it difficult to get insurance now. I'd like to thank the district for its effective work on reducing our wildfire risk. This is absolutely critical work and I'm really impressed by the presentation today. It gives a real sense of confidence. Thanks.
Thank you. And then Mr. Larry Minikis, then Roger Roberts.
Yeah, Carl, thank you. It was very informative today. And one question is, uh, is that the only bald eagle nest we know of on the watershed? That, that, that's one thing I'm wondering, do we have more bald eagle nests on that watershed? And the second question is, um, I assume you're following on any new research on broom and other invasive eradication methods that might be employed in the future. And I do believe that herbicide use should be reviewed, re-reviewed occasionally. Um, it's, it's an evil, but it's in some ways the lesser of the evils, considering what fire will do and the cost, um, as mentioned, to do an acre is so high compared to what, um, uh, uh, the use of herbicides can do. And I'll remind the board that a very large study, multi-year study was done by Janet Klein and her team, and that got buried and was never released. Um, I would suggest that that study be shown the light of day, because there's a lot of, there were a lot of meetings over that and there's a lot of good information in that, and then it just sort of went away. And I think that's unfortunate. And, um, certainly with, it's understandable that, um, it should definitely not be used near waterways and that it's also understandable that it's an emotional issue for a lot of people. Uh, uh, you know, who wants to see an herbicide used near our, near our water sources? And it's completely understandable. But the question really is, and, uh, this goes to the last speaker, is the perception of its negative impact versus his actual post-treatment impacts, I think needs to be looked at. And what happens after? Do we really have an issue after its use? And this is, this is away from waterways. I, I want to, uh, reinforce that point, that we have a lot of room that is not near, um, our water sources that certainly could be treated and treated inexpensively. I know from the work that my friend and I did during COVID, two years of work, and it's not insignificant. Um, I did a lot of Eldridge Grade and we did a lot of Tucker Trail and Bill Williams there. And we went back a couple of weeks ago to look at it and, you know, it's like this tall now. You know, leave it for about two years, everything from tiny little shoots to like this. And one side of us says, oh God, look at it. It's, it's back like ever. But another side of us is, well, we're going to go out and, and stay after it, you know, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roger Roberts and then Tom Boss.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to ask a money question. Uh, is there a liability issue associated with wildfire that originates on watershed lands?
Hmm.
Uh, and has that been analyzed? Uh, and if there is a liability issue, then uh, you're actually saving yourself from a risk reward uh, to people who sue you because you didn't manage your property to prevent spreading wildfire. So has that analysis been done and would that be a good idea?
Well, thanks. I'll can respond quickly to the question. I mean, I, I think I'll give the lawyer response, which it depends on the facts and the circumstances. Um, but generally I would think not, um, uh, and certainly, um, because in part we do, we do manage the lands the best we can. Um, I don't think that there's a standard by which we would be held that, that would result in liability for, um, you know, that, that issue in particular. I think it's, you know, really does come back to what's the source of the fire? How did it start? Um, and so generally I would think no. Um, but it's not a bad thing to think about, um, as far as just protecting, um, the community, regardless of, of the actual liability. So.
Does that conclude your comment, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then last we have, um, Mr. Tom Boss.
Yeah, just a couple of brief comments. Um, communication and outreach is key. You guys have been doing a pretty good job of it. Um, but even adding a single word, I heard we talked about, uh, fuel breaks. Well, I now refer to them as shaded fuel breaks, because most of them are, uh, we keep the canopy. And a lot of times people think, oh, a fuel break means you're just going to, you know, decimate the, the ridge line or something. And we don't do that in Marin, um, generally. So, um, and also, uh, I liked what, uh, what was said about like the goats giving an explanation of, you know, uh, it's all about the timing and, and where are you doing it and being aware of the issues? And you can actually have a benefit out of, uh, beyond just the getting rid of the grasses. So communication is a big thing. I loved, uh, what, uh, a previous speaker said about adopting a patch. I think that's a great idea and we have, most of our high schools have mountain bike and running teams that benefit from the watershed. And I'm sure they'd be interested in adopting, uh, some of those, uh, broom patches and, and whacking them down. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
I have a quick comment.
Please, Larry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Boss. I appreciated that comment, um, especially the one about communication. About, I'm guessing six years ago, it's probably longer. There was a joint, um, workshop between the Fire Department and the Marin Water District. It was very effective, probably one of the most interesting events I've ever attended. And, um, I, I remember one of the pictures from the fire guys. It showed a house with the proper clearance and then it was aerial views of the same house over time. And the plants march into the side and their point was, it's the one thing as a homeowner you can do is to take care of that defensible area. You don't have to ask anybody. You don't have to hire anybody necessarily, but I think it's time to do that again, uh, especially in light of the insurance issues. I think that would be a very effective workshop, so you might want to think about that. It's, I, I don't remember what it was titled, something about wildfire or something like that. But it was a very nicely done program, um, well-attended and very, uh, information, uh, high in transfer.
Okay, thanks, Carl. And we'll move on to item number, um, three, the Lagunitas Creek Stewardship Plan Update.
Well, good afternoon, directors. Jonathan Kaler, Fisheries Program Manager, joined today with Eric Atlinger, our longtime esteemed aquatic ecologist. And we're here to just provide you a informational item on our stewardship plan, our Lagunitas Creek Stewardship Plan, a little history about it. Some interesting salmon monitoring trends that we've been observing lately. And then our plans to update the plan in the coming months. So as you know, the stewardship plan was really developed in response to Water Board Order ninety-five seventeen. And it was a very collaborative process. It culminated in two thousand and eleven with the idea that it was a ten-year plan. It set forth a a series of actions that the district would lead, a series of actions that the district would support and participate in. And really, the focus is on these three species, which we've all talked about at length, especially Coho salmon. As you know, Lagunitas Creek is a particular stronghold for for that species. So the stewardship plan is really comprised of ten elements. It's actually quite a comprehensive document. If you haven't looked at it lately, it's on our website. You can certainly link to it there. But it has these ten elements and really monitoring, I would say in my mind, is perhaps the most important, just because it really, the the results we get from all of our fisheries monitoring inform a lot of our other stewardship actions in terms of restoration and what we do and where we focus that work. So we approach fisheries monitoring in a very standardized way, which I've talked to you about in the past with this kind of three-pronged approach where we look at adults in the fall and winter and then into early spring. And then we put out a smolt trap in the in the spring through kind of early summer. And then in the summer, we actually go out and count juvenile salmonids. And, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. I think Lagunitas Creek is, or Lagunitas Creek is very highly regarded in terms of not only the quality of work we produce, but the 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 long-term data set that we have. And so Eric, who's been with the district for most of that time, really gets the question a lot. So how are the salmon doing? And we're here to just share some some information we've gathered during the last few years.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, as Jonathan mentioned, I get this question more often than any other, just how are the fish doing? People don't typically want a very detailed answer. They just want to hear they're doing fine or not as good as last year or something like that. The problem I have with answering the question that way is it's really complicated. We collect an enormous amount of data on the different life stages of salmon. And this, when you put it all on one chart, it's it's a mess. And there are different ways to describe how the salmon are doing. And for instance, if you look at adult numbers over the years, there isn't very much of a trend. It's they're they're fairly stable, whereas the number of juveniles we see in the late summer and fall has been going up and the number of fish going out to the ocean has been going up. Generally, when I talk about fish numbers, I relate it back to the generations. So the what we call a year class, so the direct descendants. So I'll say, you know, three years, the the numbers are better than three years ago, better than the parent generation. And that's a nice shorthand for for how to describe the numbers. But even then, the different year classes are showing different trends and we have a weak year class and strong year class. So what I'd like to do today is just talk about the most recent cohort, which has been really extraordinary. The the fish that we saw go out to the ocean this year and and their parents. So the adult salmon run that produced these fish spawned in Lagunitas Creek in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And for survival of those eggs and young salmon, it was absolutely perfect and actually taught us, taught me something about what conditions, when the stars align and weather conditions align, what is possible in this watershed? So you may remember that we had an atmospheric river event in October, which is very unusual. So I've been working here for almost twenty-four years and had never seen a rainfall event that early in the season. And that essentially set the table for the fish. It it cleaned out all of the summer growth of algae. It just created a blank slate for the fish to come in and lay their eggs. We had a number of storms early on in the season that allowed fish to migrate throughout the watershed. In from like mid-December, we had some more strong storms and we had a fairly typical run where adult salmon were seen everywhere. Typically, when people think of it, the year as being a good year for salmon, what they mean is that they saw salmon in places where they didn't usually see them. And that was the case in that year, that we had just had salmon everywhere. So then, at the typical end of the egg-laying period, the rains just stopped and we had a very dry winter where those eggs incubated undisturbed. And this is a vulnerable time for salmon eggs. A lot of years, storms will wash away salmon eggs or will deposit a layer of silt on top of them and smother them. Throughout the winter, we had hardly any rain and those eggs were remained undisturbed to the point that some of the reds that year, which are the gravel nests that the salmon build, started to dry out and they started to become exposed. And just as I was getting worried that we would have a lot of mortality because of not enough flows, we had some rain in April that re-wetted those reds and allowed the ones that still had viable eggs and and fry within to emerge. So the result of that confluence of events was an inconceivable number of fish. We saw, so you can see from this chart that, you know, a good year previously, we would estimate maybe thirty to forty thousand juvenile Coho. And using that historical estimation method, we estimated well over a hundred thousand juvenile Coho. We were seeing Coho everywhere we looked through the summer. And the following spring, when those fish were old enough to migrate to the ocean, we saw an unprecedented number of smolts. Now, I'll point out in this chart that the purple bars are the numbers that we count at our smolt trap. The white bars are counted by our colleagues at the National Park Service from a tributary of Lima Creek that enters the creek below our trap. So combined, these are the streams of fish that go into Tamalas Bay. And combined, it was an absolute record. The number that we counted was very good, not an not an absolute record. I'll also point out in this chart that we have a Coho population recovery target. It's not actually an official target. The federal government has an adult target for Lagunitas Creek of twenty-six hundred adults. And we, an average survival rate is about four percent. So in order to get twenty-six hundred fish back, we would need to have about sixty-five thousand smolts go out to the ocean. So that's sort of our target for how many fish we would like to see leaving the creek so that we get our target number of adults back. I have long ago given up on predicting because what happens in the ocean is out of our control. When the ocean is warm and not productive, you know, not producing a lot of the plankton that the fish need, their survival is poor. So, but yes, fingers crossed. A year from now, we could be getting record numbers of adults. So these two charts are sort of looking at how we think of the the survival between the juveniles and the smolts that go out to the ocean. There's a lot of mortality that often happens during that winter. And one of the ways that we are studying what is driving that mortality is we are implanting fish with pit tags. So these are the same little chips that we put in pets. Every fish gets a unique number. And we have antennas in the creek to record them as they swim past. And we can see what parts of the watershed are really good for allowing fish to survive and maybe what parts of the watershed are where fish are not surviving as well. One of the results of that effort is we saw quite a lot of fish that we had tagged go downstream and then go upstream into a Lima Creek. And we don't know how long they were there, probably, you know, much of the winter. And then our colleagues at the Park Service scanned them and let us know that we're seeing a lot of your fish in our creek. That clearly was a survival strategy that worked. And in the next few years, we'll be doing a lot more of that so we can kind of understand where do these fish need to be to survive and and produce the most number of fish each year? All right, thank you.
So another major component, perhaps.
Sorry, just one question for Eric before we move on. Eric, we hear a lot about the, you know, increasing temperatures of water in the streams. Is that something you're able to evaluate at this stage with respect to survival? And do you do you see any patterns related to increasing temperature?
Yeah, so the official Lagunitas Creek in one sense are quite vulnerable to that because we are near the very southern limit of their global distribution. So you know, all species that are at their southern limit are going to be more vulnerable to climate change as their ranges shift north. On the other hand, because of the cold water releases from Kent Lake, ironically, our Coho are in a much better shape to survive over the long term because Lagunitas Creek stays unusually cold for this region. And so far, even in the tributaries, we are seeing only in isolated cases, particularly during the drought, where the fish were experiencing low flows, high temperatures that are going to become more common over time. But in the main stem, I actually have confidence that the fish, the can, the temperature regime for the fish is going to be all right.
The positive impacts of a dam on fish survival are really ironic. That's very interesting. Thank you.
Sure.
It's, it, the dam does much more than just the temperature.
So the other major component or another major component of the stewardship plan, of course, is our ongoing restoration and enhancement commitments. And given what we've just heard from Eric and the complexity of the the salmon lifecycle, it's often difficult to attribute those swings in population to our specific actions, which is a a challenge. We certainly will try to make those correlations as we go forward and we have in the past. But it's it's difficult to sort of point causally from one thing to the result we see. That said, I think that, you know, it is important to note that, you know, even though we're seeing a a stable or maybe even slightly decreasing trend in Coho adults, we are seeing that in increase over the long haul, over the long term in juvenile. So it is encouraging. Another bit of encouraging news I will just add here is that we just recently received confirmation that we got a four-point-six million dollar grant from California Department of Fish and Wildlife to continue our work. So that means that this ongoing restoration commitment will will continue and and we have that fully funded starting this year. So definitely positive development there. So we met with the Lagunitas TAC back in twenty twenty-one. This, I mentioned the stewardship plan's a ten-year document. That was the ten-year kind of anniversary. It was terrible timing. It was right in the middle of the drought. Plus, we had all of this planning going on around restoration and the general consensus within the the TAC was to come back to this. And and that's why we're here. Basically, we're re-engaging in this process and with the information that we've gathered from fisheries monitoring and and from our design work. And the key takeaway is from those initial meetings from the TAC were were these, basically to complete the design and construction of our thirteen Lagunitas Creek restoration sites, which were, as I mentioned, on on track to do. We have good grant funding to to do that. So we're in good shape there. Update the restoration effectiveness monitoring. And what that means is basically how are we going to measure success, which is something that we've heard at previous board meetings, an interest in how do we tie what we're actually putting into the results we're seeing on the ground? It's complicated for sure, but we're doing our best to come up with metrics that make sense there. Other concepts or thoughts were how better to utilize local resources? So can we pull gravel from the Casio? Potentially Sula Huli, other reservoirs. Kent is probably not very feasible as gravel sources for our gravel, you know, augmentation efforts in Lagunitas Creek, using fallen logs, looking for perhaps other sources of trees. Eucalyptus are certainly abundant in the county and have been used in the past on these kinds of restoration projects. And then to just continue to support beaver reintroduction efforts. This is not something that we would necessarily lead, but just be supportive of. Eric has a long history with working with stakeholder groups there. And California Department of Fish and Wildlife has dedicated funding and staff to this in the coming year. So just be kind of in that conversation and generally supportive where it makes sense for us. Another item was to just make sure our plan aligns with other programs. So this includes the species recovery plans that are being put forth. All of the restoration we're doing is consistent with what are being recommended. In fact, in our grant proposals, we often have to justify that exact thing where we say we are addressing this particular need. One other aspect is the just the increasing sort of the the output of information. It is, it is very complex data, as you saw, but I do think that we have an opportunity here to simplify some of the reporting we do in a in a way that allows the public to engage a little more more closely with this work. And, you know, a good example of that would be the creek notes that Adrian and her crew put together recently with Eric's expertise and long-running understanding of the watershed, just getting this this information out there in a digestible way is something we're we're striving for. The the current Lagunitas Creek stewardship plan is quite dense. It's probably more complicated and complex than it needs to be at this point. It was, it had a very specific purpose at that time, but I feel like we can, we can definitely improve its readability, make it more of an approachable document. And then obviously, just continue to look for restoration opportunities and engage the TAC. This is very much a collaborative process. We give the TAC an update on this process every single meeting. And that's the the goal going forward. Here's the the timeline we're looking at. So here we are at that first step, talking to, oh, actually, at the second step. So we we talked to the TAC back in February of twenty twenty-one. And now we're coming to you to just generally discuss this approach. We're looking to have a draft plan to you sometime the end of the year, early next year, and then finalize it by summer of twenty twenty-four. The good news is the plan still works. We still follow it. It, all of the information in there is still valid. We just want to update it with current info and and use that approach. So this is an informational item. Happy to entertain any questions.
Great. Jonathan, Eric, thank you. Board comments?
I have a question. Do we need to be worried about introducing aquatic mammals with respect to Giardia?
I am definitely not an expert on that. I would defer to California Department of Fish and Wildlife there. So.
I mean, after all, it's called beaver fever. You know, not an accident.
Yeah.
I I don't know what the impact is. I don't know how many, how many, do you have any idea how many aquatic mammals we have now?
I don't. This, that's in the wildlife biology territory and that is not my.
Do you see them?
Area, but Eric certainly may.
Yeah, so we do have muskrats in all of our lakes and muskrats are known carriers of Giardia. So we already have those and the people I've spoken to. the people I've spoken to about this particular issue say that the, there, there is no additional risk from, from beavers in the watershed.
So one in a thousand is the same? Critters? If you have one or a thousand, the risk is the same?
Oh, see, I, I, I cannot speculate on what the density of beavers would need to be to, you know, increase a pathogen that, that also is out of my, my area.
Yeah, it's a tricky one.
It's an interesting question, Larry. I would, I know in, in, for many water suppliers do some level of Giardia monitoring. I know it's not easy. It requires staining. So we do do that. So we should be able to detect changes and trends, right?
The problem is the treatment plant doesn't change. So there's not a lot you can do about it. You know, it's coming, but the process is the same. So if the density, I, I've been promoting cranking down on plant places that have wastewater upstream. We don't control at all the discharge of Giardia at all. So you can have a wastewater treatment plant discharging a million cis per liter.
Luckily, that's, luckily, that's not an.
Not our problem, but the water standard is one. So it, it's kind of silly, my thinking, the way they approach it. But, um, you know, I, I don't know. I don't recall having any hits on the Giardia. But it's definitely an issue with those critters. Uh, and I'm all for the beavers, so I, I think it's a great idea. It's just, the question is, you know, what, it, it's kind of like the recreational question we had the other day. You know, where do you draw the line between water quality and the use of the watershed, considering a beaver to be using the watershed in that sense?
Any additional comments?
Just to thank you for really interesting update. You know, it's, um, yeah, you know, I think for me, it's, it's just such an amazing reminder of, of how much we cover at the, at Marin Water and, and how important the work is. So thanks a lot, Eric and Jonathan.
Yeah, I, I couldn't resist on a couple of things here. Foremost, I mean, just again, like as I've said at other board meetings and, and chances when I have, we are, really, our district is recognized as being really important experts in this, in the effort of restoring Coho and protecting Coho populations on the coast. And, and, um, you know, just truly, um, the fact that we were awarded as much money as we, we were, I think, is a signal that the work we're doing is highly valued and seen as a value above and beyond just the benefits of our watershed, um, the importance to the entire recovery of the coastal population. You know, I guess I would say, you know, recognizing the incredibly great work we've done, the, um, the fact that our, our adult populations are largely flat. I mean, there's some, you can draw that line, kind of, you can bend it in a number of different ways. And that's not a, this is at all, not at all a criticism, but it is a concern that we're not gaining ground. And that, um, and I would say that, that, you know, in everything that we're doing, we are trying to gain ground, whether that is increasing water supply reliability, whether that's outreach and engagement to our communities, protecting our watersheds, reducing fire risk. You know, we are, we are trying to be the best stewards that we can. And, and honestly, I would like to see what it is we can do to change that curve. And I know we don't control the whole thing. What happens with in open ocean conditions is out of our control. But, um, and it's, it's not like salmon population, Coho populations have been, I'm looking at you guys and I know we are, we already know all these same things, but I'll say this to everybody else, they're not like, it's not like Lagunitas is flat and everywhere else is, is taking off. It's, it's a problem elsewhere, but we are seeing some places where, um, like on the Ten Mile Creek and some other bright spots where we actually are seeing Coho populations um, increasing even during the drought. And I think that it really comes down to it, you know, what can we control? It's our habitat in channel. And, you know, I think looking at, you know, fascinating year that's going to be worth watching, um, what happens with our returns. I, a takeaway that I have around this is that, you know, when we did have that perfect timing of, of, you know, a fall flows that brought fish in, you know, and then stop, you know, and allow the fish to spawn, you know, and to not have any, um, really significant flows that scour the reds. These are kind of like a perfect set of conditions. We can't, we would only love to hopefully repeat these same things every year. Get all the water we needed in the fall and then, you know, be able to bank on our good fortune thereafter. But it makes me think, you know, to the questions of, you know, how important is a fall fresh yet? In terms of attracting fish into the system? Is that, is that part of what we might learn from this? Is that, you know, that do we have an issue with those first rains creating a signal to get the fish in as early as we, as, you know, not too early, but just right so that they can spawn? You know, um, our flows, you know, when we do have our, our flows in the winter time, you know, are there, you know, are there flows that we would like to try to avoid getting above some peak level where we can avoid scour? Part of that is, I think, also just, you know, having more wood in the stream so we can slow down velocities so that we, we don't have as much scour when we do have high flow events. So I'm glad every piece of wood that we're putting in is, is happening and we could, honestly, we could double what it is that we're doing and our, and we still wouldn't look like what we did historically. If we, if we want to look at what our, you know, what our landscape looked like historically as a model of what we want to try to get toward, there would be so much more wood in the stream. You would barely be able to see the stream in, in a lot of sections because that's what we used to have in all of our coastal watersheds where we had large wood, redwoods that would, had fallen in over thousands of years. And then we had a, a period of time where we thought all that wood was bad and it all got yanked out. And now we're putting it back. So that's, you know, truly, we, we could, we could be doubling down on all, all the great woodwork we're doing. And I guess I would say, you know, you know, I also wonder to what extent, when you were talking about, we got some finals, some flows in, uh, some rains in, in April that kept things from dewatering, made me wonder to what extent we, you know, can we, how can we manage the flows that we are required to release? How can we manage them maybe to be more adaptive to conditions? You know, wherein if we are releasing, if enough water is going downstream to meet our, our release requirements, you know, and maybe we can be more adaptive in our flows so that we don't have low flows because we're, we're, we have a changing hydrology. So the idea of, of just roteley, you know, managing our, the, the amount of water that we are required to put down without some adaptive management thinking, I think, is, is old school. I think we have to be more creative to that and I don't know what that would look like, but I would love to see us be more thoughtful of being able to put the water that we do need to put down, put it to the best use that we can. And I, last thing I'll just say is I, I would, I would just love to see in, in the plan going forward, I, I would love to hear what it is that we think is needed if we wanted to change that adult return curve. Well, not that we can and we can't do it single-handedly and not that we have the resources to, you know, in the next 10 years dramatically change it. But what, what do we need to do? You know, based on our expertise and the knowledge that has been accumulated over time, what, what do we think the real limiting factor is that we really need to drive on? And, you know, maybe there's things that we can do to try to accelerate that. So I'd love to see what, what we can maybe aspirationally put in there into our plan so that we, if we have an opportunity, if there's a, if there's more funds, you know, if we have another abundant period of time of funding, maybe there's some things that we can do above and beyond what we've planned in our current budgets. So huge kudos to all the great work that.
Just to clarify, it's, um, great commentary. Just to clarify, the, the drying of reds we saw were in the tributary sort of outside of our control. So it's difficult in those years. It's in Devil's Gold Sand Geronimo where we really don't have a valve to open.
That, but, uh, and, and, and I know Eric was at the same conference I was at and maybe even thinking the same thing, which is then the point that I was making earlier about, um, about gully stuffing, using these tools to repair our landscape's ability to infiltrate water, which then is the contribution of water that we need in our streams. And the more we can restore our landscape's ability to store that water and provide it. And the fact that, the fact that, uh, in a fairly moderate wet year, we were seeing things drying up. This is something that they've seen up in the Metoll where you have all this young, um, cereal, um, growth that came in after logging. And even after dealing with a lot of the, the human demands on water, they're still not seeing historic hydrology because the landscape has changed. And I think if we want to see our, some of maybe these tributary watersheds continuing to persist and provide refuge and, and produce, maybe that's a place where we need to do a little thought of like, is there an ability to increase amount of infiltration we want to see? And maybe that can keep our reds in those tributary watersheds from, from drying up in an average year.
Great, thank you. And I thank you both again for this. And also thank you for your continued engagement with Lagunitas TAC. I know that stakeholder group is incredibly interested in the work we're doing. So thank you for continuing to do that. And Monty, you, you took the words out of my mouth, but said it more eloquently about that is, you know, you talked about this historic year in 2021 and the lessons we're learning from that or going to learn from that. Is that something that can be memorialized to use as potential? Different ways to do things with our releases to try to mimic that year as best as possible or mimic something along those lines? If we can do it manually from the controls that we do have, the limited controls that we have, be interesting to see if, if there is anything that could come from that. And then the only other comment I have is, is a, another thank you for the public outreach piece. And to encourage as much of that as possible because people walk along that trail all day long and have no idea 10 feet, 15 feet away. Some of the most progressive restoration work in the country is happening right there for the fish population. So be good to highlight our work. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we do have one, Mr. Roger Roberts. Go ahead, sir.
Question, uh, now that we have otter in the Lagunitas Creek watershed, has there been any increased impact of their presence on our ability to meet targets for increased Coho population? It's just a question as to whether or not the otter are thriving to such an extent that it's affecting the results of what we're trying to achieve with Coho salmon.
Well, I'm going to repeat myself here and say that it's complicated. So, uh, yes, the otters are doing very well and yes, uh, they do eat salmon. When numbers are low, uh, it, it does pain me to see an unspawned female getting eaten by an otter. If our salmon populations were healthy, we wouldn't have, the, the otters would not be able to make any sort of dent in the population. The salmon are in the creek for a relatively short time. And for the rest of the year, the otters are subsisting mostly on crayfish, which is actually a, a benefit because crayfish are not native, uh, or the crayfish we have. Those crayfish do eat young fish. Uh, and the otters are a great depleter of, of non-native crayfish. So, uh, I, the, the simple answer is that otters are not the biggest problem for Coho. And if we can get the numbers of Coho up, uh, otters couldn't possibly make a dent.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no further speakers.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn, adjourn today's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.